Okay. I call the meeting to order. Please call the roll. Rebecca?
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the June 28, 2021 council meeting. Approval of July 9, 2021 payroll in the amount of $131,881.60. Acceptance of the Economic Development Committee minutes. Acceptance of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee minutes. Resolution approving employment in the Park and Recreation Department. Consent of park use permit for Third Friday's Art Walk. That's a noise exemption. July 17, 2021. August 20 and 21. September 17 and October 15 and 16 of 2021. Approval of liquor license for the book house here in Fairfield. Localized store Torino's Pizza and Steak House. Approval of total claims in the amount of $900,347.25. We have four claims larger than $75,000 and they include Community First National Bank in the amount of $142,429.71 for our pumper truck loan payment. Jones Contracting Corporation for $96,287.02. That's for the Merrill and Carpenter paving. Maxwell Construction, $137,814.71 for Step Two in the wastewater. And Midway Freightliner, Inc., $132,544. And that's for a truck for our Streets Department. And just council, so you know we have Jacob Shear here. If you have any questions regarding the park use permit. And so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Rasmussen. Any questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes, with the exception of approval of minutes, I was not at that meeting.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we have no public forum and appearances. Oh, by the way, Jacob, good luck. We hope you have a successful Third Friday's Art Walk.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Yeah. Okay, back to resolutions, action items and ordinances. Our first action item is Sustainability Coordinator update. Consideration of the USDA grant possibilities. Mark Dwyer and Ann Walton are here from the Sierra Club.
Thank you, Mayor Dwyer, and thank you, respected council people. I'm here for a couple of different things tonight. First of all, we want to thank you again for committing to funding the Sustainability Coordinator. That's a key element of our Community Resilience Plan, our project. We have three objectives tonight. One is to give you an update on that project and we hope to give you regular updates going forward. The second is to ask for a point of clarification and the third is to inform you of an important event that's coming up. So, so far, we have the financial commitment from the city and the financial commitment from MIU for the Sustainability Coordinator. The county has elected not to participate at this time in this project, so we are fundraising. We've already raised an additional $4,000 per year for the next three years from the private sector for the position and we'll be speaking to additional potential private and corporate donors over the next couple of weeks. We've also been identifying potential grant opportunities to support the position and to provide some program funding so that the Sustainability Coordinator will have some resources to work with when he or she is hired. Regarding the grants, we're working closely with Pathfinders RC&amp;D and also with the Iowa Waste Exchange and we're looking at, we're looking for relevant USDA, EPA and DNR grants, particularly around food waste composting, which would reduce and redirect food waste from our landfill and possibly then enrich our local food production soils with the resulting compost. This type of grant would fulfill the city's request that a third of the Sustainability Coordinator's time be spent on waste management issues. As we have identified grants and created proposals, we've learned that we need to be, we need a point of contact here within the City Council or the appropriate committee to help us to vet our ideas. This is especially important if the city is going to be the grant recipient or if the city is required by the grant to provide in-kind or matching funds. We don't have any way of knowing that until we check with somebody if that's going to be possible. So sometimes these opportunities have short timelines and prompt action is important. And finally, as we promised in our first presentation to you, on Friday, September 10th, the Sierra Club will present a Resilient Communities Forum from 10:00 in the morning till 12:30 and that will be at the Sondheim. So we have the date, Friday, September 10th. We have the venue, that's the Sondheim, and our speakers are confirmed. So this is your save the date notice. We are extending a personal invitation to each one of you to attend and we request, Mayor Dwyer, that you will strongly recommend that key city employees would attend the event. In keeping with our theme of community collaboration, we would also like very much to see the city of Fairfield co-sponsor the event. We can talk about that tonight or we can come back to you with a specific request at a later date. So the main objective tonight is to provide you with an update and to request clarification on what is our ongoing point of contact that you would like us to use as we move forward with grants and what have you. So I thank you for your time and for your partnership in these activities and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, Mr. Dwyer, you said the county decided not to participate?
At this time.
Okay, what was the reasoning?
The reason was they couldn't imagine how any activities that we might engage in would benefit the unincorporated areas. I think, I think that was a little, I don't agree with them, but that's what they see right now. And our thought is that we'll go back to them when we have a specific project in mind that undeniably benefits the unincorporated areas. But that's not going to be our first focus since they're not participating.
Is there any thought of going to the smaller towns? Would that be useful also to help them? Because I know Vedic City was a little bit interested.
Well, actually, we're going to speak to Vedic City on Wednesday and see if they are interested in participating. My guess is that they don't have budget to participate. I don't know. Nobody has budget when you start out. But we're going to talk to them and there's definitely some interest there, potentially from private donors, if not from the, from the city. We haven't gone to Batavia and Lockridge and those. You know, if the county wanted to participate, I would absolutely go to them and, and we might reach out to them at some point. Right now, our focus is to find funding to get a coordinator and get the whole program up and running. And then we can figure out how we can branch out. But finding the funding for the position in the first place is our highest priority right now.
Do most of these USDA grants require city cooperation either as a partner or as a conduit for receiving funds?
It varies. Some of them require that the city is the applicant. Some of them require that the city is a partner. It's always, it seems to me, from what we've looked at, and you can jump in here if you want, that it's always beneficial to have multiple partners in the grant applications. So it, it should never be Sierra Club is applying for a grant to transform Fairfield. That should never happen. It should always be Sierra Club is applying for a grant or the city is applying for a grant or Pathfinders is applying for a grant and cooperating partners would be Sierra Club, the city, yada, yada, yada. So that's, that's how it works. And there are tons of grants out there and a lot of times you really can't tell until you dive pretty deeply into it whether it's going to apply or not. So that's why we just, we need somebody that we can reach out to here who can help us figure out if, you know, if we're going to have to commit the city to X, Y, or Z. Is that realistic or, you know?
Well, since you're using, as of now, we've committed money out of the Solid Waste and Recycling Fund. So I would recommend to council that you refer this to the Environmental Franchise Committee as a point of contact for the Sierra Club. And if something comes to fruition that's plausible that we want to bring back to the council for approval and consideration, then we'll do that.
Okay. Do we need an official vote on that? An unofficial vote? Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to make Environmental Franchise to be the point of contact for Sierra Club. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to say I appreciate the work they're putting into this, putting a lot of work into looking into these different options and figuring out how to get it done and what has to be required. So I just appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Environmental and Franchise Committee, you're the chairman of that and that's also you, Judy? And Tom?
Me, myself.
Okay, great. So you'll be the people who reach out. Really appreciate that because there's just a lot of moving parts and it's really helpful to have somebody that you can go to.
Just, just to touch on it too, since we are pulling the funds through that, we are kind of, we can't go over a third of the, of the salary, correct?
Well, at least so far, to be one-third.
Okay.
With the understanding, now I-
If a third of the position is going to be devoted to that, we really can't draw more than that out of that fund. Devoted, right, okay.
I did send a, I made a phone call to actually the auditor's office on Friday. I just got an email back this afternoon, it's rather lengthy, inquiring as to, because the question came up before about whether this would be legitimate use of those funds. So I'm going to get the clarification from the auditor's office to make sure that we're on the, up and up on that.
Okay.
It looks like, just my, I just browsed the email briefly today, it looks like we'll be okay, but they asked some questions and I had to sit down and compose an answer to them. So I'll get back to you as soon as I know more about that.
Okay.
Are there any other, any other questions or comments? If not, let's, let's take a call to question on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll be back soon.
Thanks, Mark. Next is consideration to set a public hearing for annexation of appropriate bridge addition. We'd be setting this for Monday, August 9, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Melanie, do you want to say anything about that or?
I rule next week.
Okay.
So I move we set the date of the public hearing for the annexation on August 9, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, move by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Approved unanimously. Next is a resolution, consideration of approval of Howgar Hills Minor Subdivision. This is outside our city limits, but within two miles of the city limits. Melanie? Oh, okay.
Nothing very special about this, since it, it, I don't know the word I'm looking at. It was a subdivision according to the county, therefore it had to follow our subdivision process, which is why it's coming to you guys. It's already been passed through the public save, or public save planning and zoning, excuse me.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve resolution?
Second.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy.
Good.
Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item, consideration to set public hearing for intent to file an application with USDA Rural Development for financial assistance to develop Step Three sanitary sewer conveyance improvements. Again, this would be setting the public hearing for Monday, July 26 at 7:00 PM.
Motion to set public hearing Monday, July 26 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Move by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. Next action item, consideration of engagement letter with Piper Sandler Companies for Series 2021 Geo Financing. This is $3 million general obligation bonds to finance street improvements and refinance some of our debt. Does it take a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Move by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
Do we have an idea where our bond rating is right now or?
Yeah. It's been improving. I don't remember exactly what it is, but it's-
Are we A or double A? It just looks like they hit us with an extra one-tenth of a percent for each difference in the rating. I'm sure we got at least an A.
We are at least an A. I'm not sure if we're a double A or an A.
We won't know until we offer a bond.
Right.
So all we can do is find out what the last bond offering was and then we'll get reevaluated, won't we?
Moody's gave us a rating, rating upgrade last year and I just don't remember exactly what it went to. Is what the, they upgraded us last year. We didn't go up to a triple A like we'd like to be, but I know we moved up.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion or questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration to award Central Park Dining Concrete Project.
It used to be Piper Jaffrey.
That used to be Piper Jaffrey, right? That's the new name?
Yes.
All right. You want to go over this one, Melanie?
You, I'll stand up here for moral support.
Okay. So back in July last year, the council voted to approve the Central Park Table Project and approved city crews to do in-kind work, but that wasn't defined. So the initial thought was that city crews could do the concrete bases and then a professional would install the pavers. But after further review, it made more sense to do it the other way around where a professional pours the base and then volunteers and city crews can lay the pavers. That would both add longevity to the project because that concrete base work is extremely important for the longevity of the project in terms of the way it drains water. So we want a professional to do that and laying the pavers is, once the concrete work is done properly, very easy. So we solicited two bids for the work and it's slightly complicated, but both contractors were asked to provide a, an alternate for cutting the pavers but allowing volunteers and, and other city crew, whoever, to install them. And Prosper Companies here in Fairfield did so. And Wesley Barton did not. Instead, provided a number for cutting and laying the pavers. So if you look at the two numbers, the total, it appears Prosper Company is higher. However, the Barton Construction does not include touching the pavers at all. It leaves it completely out. And I believe that's because it's a, kind of an unknown for a contractor to break up the work like that, to cut pavers and not lay them. They don't know how fast volunteers would work. They don't know if it's going to be one day, two days, three days that their crews out there cutting or waiting for volunteers. It's a bit of a, of a gray area and a bit of a risk for them. So Prosper Company was saying, okay, we'll take that risk, value the cutting of the pave, pavers at 2,500. However, they did offer a bid alternate, $4,000 reduction in the cost were the city crews to install the four-inch rock base and handle traffic control. So upon looking at these and talking to Melanie, we feel like the Prosper Company bid of $12,800 for the concrete work plus 2,500 for cutting the pavers, which comes to $15,300, is preferable because when you add in the city in-kind site prep and helping to put in the pavers, you bring the total price down to basically what we have right now in the bank. I just want to add, I just found out, we got the grant from Jefferson County Foundation for the pavers. So the project at this point is fully funded.
How much was that grant?
Just under $6,000.
It's just to purchase the pavers, right? Not cutting them?
Nope. Doesn't, we have the money to pay Prosper this amount to do this work and once the pavers arrive, they can get at it, so.
What's, what's the total cost of this whole project?
I don't have that in front of me, but I can add it up.
$25,000?
Well, it's 15, 45, 35, 41-ish, something like that.
Okay.
I think it's turned into far more of, you know, a project than what perhaps was anticipated. I mean, certainly an expense that I thought because of the fact that you were assured initially that it would be all covered basically by contributions and that would not be additional expense. And I understand, you know, the city crew doing some of the, you know, of-kind things, but I think some of the, you know, additional expenses really, I guess, as you know, I was really very opposed to the project in the beginning. So it doesn't really make me happy at this point to see the expenses that are going to be incurred. And I guess it's, now it's what it is.
I understand. To be clear, the engineer's estimate was more than what it's actually costing and we're not asking for additional funds from the city. We already were in agreement that putting some in-kind work would be fair and that was what was voted on last year. We're just now defining what that is. So what was discussed last year was them pouring concrete, which I think is probably more time-intensive than what they're going to be doing, which is site prep, so.
But there's no cash for the city out of pocket for us?
Well, the lost funds, the 7,500.
But we awarded that money as a grant, so it's not, anything that wasn't already decided upon last year.
Yeah, so.
So it's, the labor wasn't clear, but it's about the same as what we expected, I think.
I think it's, it's, yeah.
And to be clear in the traffic control, the concrete trucks are going to have to back up to the square. So there'll be traffic control as, when they stop and then back up. With having the three lanes around the square, traffic's really not going to be disrupted. It's not going to take the entire Streets Department in order to do that traffic control, but we do need, you know, someone out there helping the trucks back up and that would be what they, what the city would do. And then barricading or using the orange snow fencing around it after the concrete's poured to keep dogs and-
People.
People.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not going to say that it's going to keep people off, but it'll deter people from walking on the wet concrete.
Yeah, and there's, usually a contractor would leave someone to stand watch while the concrete's drying and I volunteered myself for that duty. So anyone gets even close to it, I almost squirted them with a- Prosper Companies.
So I move we accept a bid from Prosper Company to do this, tables downtown.
In a total amount of $15,300.
$15,300.
I'm sorry, Doug, that was a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. Move by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
No.
Rasmussen?
No.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay. That was approved five to two. Okay. Next resolution, consideration of temporary no parking and two parking spaces in the 200 block of East Broadway next to the post office.
So as you know, the city crews have been repaving an alley, one alley each year. And per Mark's request, we're doing the alley by the post office this year. No, Daryl had it planned, didn't he? But they're, so they're doing the alley by the post office. I've spoken with the postmaster and there is a drive-up drop-off box in the alley that will be inaccessible during construction. And we feel like the best place for it, although it's definitely not ideal, is for the box to go in the front of the building. That means that if there's only one person in the car, they still have to stop the car and get out to go to the drop-off box. But in order to keep the box on USPS property, that's about all we can do. So what we're asking the council for tonight is to prohibit parking in two of the spaces where the box will be located. We'll put up temporary no parking, or the Streets Department will put up temporary no parking signs once that gets moved so that we can have a little bit of traffic flow. Again, if there's only one person in the car, you're going to have to get out, but that's about our best option during construction.
When is this going to cease?
So the other alleys lasted four to six weeks.
When will it begin?
They're planning on starting August, the first Monday in August, which I think is the second. And so USPS will move the box. I'm not sure how much before that date they will move it, but once they move it, that's when the no parking would be enforced.
So this is the north, north-south alley, right? Along this, between the chamber and the post office?
Yeah, so both the north-south and half of the east-west alleys getting redone.
So all the parking spaces in that alley that they currently have will be off-limits?
Correct.
And the ones out front, there's a handicap one, I believe, out front?
Yep, so the handicap one and two other regular parking spaces out front will remain after this.
There'll be two out front still, okay.
Yep. And then I think there's three maybe along Highway One and those will not be affected by the project either.
Okay.
So make the motion to approve the temporary placement of no parking spaces in front of the post office in 200 block of West Broadway.
Second.
Move by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other questions? Discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay. Next resolution, consideration to accept 23rd Street Project Temporary Easement.
In order to maintain access to H&R Block during construction of 23rd, we needed a temporary easement. The contractor for that project will construct a gravel access, but since it was on private property, we did need that individuals or that company's permission, which is what you have in front of you tonight. The individuals are donating the easement in exchange for us maintaining access.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Next resolution, consideration of support of the Workforce Housing Tax Incentive Program Application for Dome Homes Housing Project.[1636.81] Application for Dome Homes Housing Project. And we have Martin here tonight, and I personally am totally excited about this project. This is replacing 13 trailers in Utopia Park with 16 new townhomes.
Right.
Did I take your thunder?
Pardon me?
Did I just take your thunder?
Yeah, I wanted to say it. So everybody's saying, when is the Utopia Park coming down? So this is a start. We're going to see how this goes. And there's a lot of enthusiasm for, you know, cleaning up that whole area, but also having some good housing there. So first, hopefully, we'll be taking down 187 trailers eventually. But that's, this is a start. One thing I wanted to tell you is that I put, this has all come together very fast, and the application deadline is Monday. So a couple of things weren't worked out. The name I put down there was Dome Homes. And I realize that's a funny name for this because it sounds like they'll be dome-shaped homes. And so I'm going to change that name to Garden Homes One, is the first space. So I'll talk to whoever's writing up the resolution and change it.
How many tax credit incentives have we approved for you?
This will be the fifth one.
So what I was getting at, asking that, is we've done this a number of times with Martin, and this has gone really well as far as improving housing in Utopia Park and in, I forgot, what's?
North Campus Village.
North Campus Village.
Yeah, it's made a huge difference in our ability to price so people can buy.
This type of program is very beneficial for our housing in town.
I move to approve resolution providing support of Workplace Housing Tax Incentive Program application.
Second, I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Gandy, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next resolution, consideration of support of the Workforce Housing Tax Incentive Program Application for the Rail Yard Housing Project. And David Taboto is here to talk about that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a while since we've been up here. I think it's when we did the American South of Town, a very successful project. I'd like to hand out copies of what we're proposing. I think folks are familiar with the location behind Taco John's. It used to be the Rock Island Railroad Yard.
I've got one already, I think.
So that's fine.
Thank you.
And my wife was, sometimes the brains of the outfit said, let's do something nice for the community. Let's put up some housing. I'm involved in the Habitat for Humanity Family Selection Committee, and I get to see the need for housing in Fairfield, quality housing. So we're proposing to put a four-plex, two bedrooms each, at the site, which would be just west of the Broadway building. And the Broadway building has, what, 30-something apartments?
Forty-six.
How many?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, quite a few. We'll only have three or four, but we think it'll still be a high-quality project. We're looking to have it look like a railroad depot. I have some of these passed out. And like the previous presenter, we're hoping to be successful in a grant from the state for workhouse, work...
Workforce housing.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Taboto, in this diagram, is the railroad still present? The railroad's still there?
Yeah, that's not, that's just for our use. Put cars up and down. Someone looked at that and said, I'm not sure I want to live so close to the tracks. And they thought it was the Burlington tracks. I said, no, no, these are tracks we've had in there over 25 years. And we put our inventory on there when we buy and sell railroad cars.
They won't be used for, they won't be actually used for rail.
They won't be actively used, but we may combine that with some retail space and so forth as we get to develop this. Any questions?
So this is kind of coming off of West Broadway, you said?
Yes. The entrance and egress, the main entrance and egress will be West Broadway. The secondary will be Briggs.
Are you going to expect us to extend the road any length?
Is there what?
Do you expect us to extend that road any length?
No, you don't have, in fact, we've already put down some paver brick in the area and so forth. We have more, and some of it was recycled from this alley right out here. So we're trying to reuse everything we can.
Water and sewer access is okay? Because we ran into that with the Broadway building. Do we know that?
We have two access.
No, no, the water and sewer, how are you going to access that?
The what?
The water and sewer lines.
Yeah.
To the walls. Okay, that comes in the alley to the west of it.
Okay.
And I have water on the property right now.
Oh, I didn't type.
So the city wanted to install any new lines?
Well, maybe a connector for, they may need a bigger main.
Who's Melon? She puts a note on top of her head, right? Okay, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Are these accurate? The house itself, is this, it says four-plex. How is that?
The floor plan, good question. I have the floor plan. Two bedrooms for each apartment and two bathrooms, at least for the upstairs. We may have an ADA apartment or two, and in that case, there's only room for one more than that.
What's the total square footage? Total square footage, just?
Nine forty-three.
Pretty small.
And what is the requirement in Fairfield? What is the minimum, seven something?
Eight hundred, right?
How many?
We think.
Eight hundred. So this is...
Best of our recollection.
This is plenty.
Yeah, it's per unit, so. Well, I move we approve the letter for the application.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy to accept this?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other questions? Not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Great, that was approved unanimously. Good luck, David.
Thank you, Councilor.
It's hard to see that project happen as well. Under the mayor's report, just, I want to mention a couple of things and have committees, I'd like for you to vote on a couple of things to take to the committee. But first, I'd like to mention the state audit that you were emailed this audit back in March, on March 8th. The state auditors did not come down because of COVID. So I think we've improved in some of the areas of internal control. Maybe it's not perfect, but it's better. And Rebecca said they are coming back in a month, so I anticipate that this year we would have an official visit from the auditors where they can go through the report with us and we can really ask questions. So.
So can you prepare hard copies for us? Do we have a copy? I don't remember getting one.
No, we didn't bring any out.
If you want a hard copy?
Normally, we would get a hard copy, so we can...
Yeah, normally they would send us hard copies, but they were only doing just these this year, the email.
I've got a hard copy here, Doug, if you want me to...
All right.
If you would like me to copy that.
We're trying to save a favor. It's okay.
And I did forward it to you again today.
I got a bunch of piled-up emails. I haven't seen them all yet, but I saw something about it.
Okay. So you can expect that for this next year. A couple of other things, you know, the CARES funding is coming up. We haven't received anything, and we may be getting some additional funding through the Arbor Department of Management. And so I'd really like to get your approval for the Ways and Means Committee to meet and really start talking about that money and how it will be allocated. And so we have plenty of time to think about it and get input from everyone. The CARES, we expect to get over a couple of years.
Two years.
And it has to be spent, as I recall, by a certain timeframe.
Yeah, it's actually what the video I was watching today, we have until like 24 or 26 almost to spend it.
Okay.
So we have time to spend the funds. And I'll have to look into what you were showing me today on the video as far as, or the article from Des Moines Register, about as far as those funds, but we'll check into that also.
Yep. So if, you know, so I'd like to entertain a motion to take this to Ways and Means and get this discussion started.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Pam. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And then there's one other topic, and that is, Aaron and I earlier this year had a meeting with Calvin and Pam from Parks and Recreation. And one of the discussions was, and actually Michael brought it up, after we accepted a new park, which is, you know, it's stretching them pretty thin. So we had them prioritize our parks, and they came up with three places that we should have a longer discussion about. And also, I think we should add that, the public restrooms into that discussion to say, what is the long-term plan for that building? Are we going to rehab it? Are we going to keep it? You know, what are we going to do with it? So, and that may also, I'm sure that will come to Ways and Means also at some point and could be part of, again, the CARES funding, depending on what y'all decide on that.
Can we add to that, the restrooms at the Waterworks Park?
That's, isn't that already in the plan to be...
Two commissioners read the other day, and they wanted to know what was status of that.
They're going to do a shelter with new bathrooms, I think is the plan.
And a shower, maybe?
The status of that is you need to hire an assistant city engineer, so I would have time to work on it. No. So I think maybe the discussion, you could add to that discussion what you're going to do with the old restrooms and maybe the old shelter. But as far as the new shelter, looking at an open shelter with a kitchenette, three or four bathrooms. And we have looked into some options of like a beach shower.
Shower would be good, too.
You know, an open space shower, nothing with closed doors, you know, washing the sand off of you, that type of shower. So we've looked into some options with that, but haven't gotten any further. The, you know, obviously, the water and sewer demand for something like that would be so small that the shower wouldn't affect it.
Is the shelter there, is that a Lions or Kiwanis shelter?
I don't know that.
I would, something like that. If you can take it down, you got to talk to them, probably, because they have an investment in it a little bit. They might want to reinvest in it, though.
I don't know.
They have a logo on it, that's all I'm saying.
I don't remember that. Okay.
Bob? Yeah, you own it, but I think the Kiwanis, if the Kiwanis put it up, they might have an interest or their lines in helping to reconstruct whatever is going on. So they get their logo back up on there again.
Okay. So, okay, so I entertain a motion to take those items to the Property Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. That was approved, and that is all I have right now. Next is the City Attorney Report. John, do you have anything tonight?
I want to thank anybody and everybody for...
You want to come to the mic so we can really hear you, John?
Come to the mic.
We don't want to miss anything.
Well, I told you, you could come sit up in Dave's chair today.
The only thing I will generally report is, I will have more of a report next time. We'll probably be in closed session, though, before we go up to mediation. Other than that, I just wanted to thank everybody for being part of 50 years. That was an awful nice thing that a bunch of people did just out of the blue. So, anyway, we'll keep on ticking, okay?
That's right. Okay. Committee and Board reports, Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met this evening at 6:30 PM. Present were members Katie Anderson and myself. We had a quorum. Also present was Aaron Koike, our city administrator, and Joe Hurd with the City Street Department. The sole item for discussion at that meeting was equipment purchase. Already budgeted in our fiscal year budget was $60,000 for a backhoe replacement. And Mr. Hurd presented a reasoning for why the city should choose particular backhoe. We, the Water Department had looked at three different backhoe replacements, and a 2015 John Deere, which was priced at $58,300, a 2017 John Deere was priced at $74,500, and a 2017 CAT, which was priced at $69,600. For reasons which were outlined in the report, the CAT equipment had fewer hours, was a lot cleaner, more mechanically sound, and it was the recommendation of the State Street Department that the city purchased that particular replacement backhoe. Now, the price was, the offering price was $69,600. So we were able to get this within our budget because I believe the Street Department is selling two or has sold two...
Will sell.
Will sell two.
It's a closed, sealed bid for Friday, so.
Sealed bid for Friday, or they are selling two...
Two dump trucks.
Two dump trucks for approximately $9,600, which brings the net price for this backhoe to $60,000, which is within budget. After our discussion with Mr. Hurd, it was decided by the committee to recommend to the council, it was decided by the committee unanimously to recommend to the council that we approve the, support and approve the Street Department's recommendation to purchase a 2017 CAT for $69,600 at a net price of $60,000. So that's our recommendation to the council. I would move that the council, I move that the council accept the City Department's recommendation and purchase a 2017 CAT backhoe replacement at a price of $69,600 after the sale of the two dump trucks with a net price of $60,000.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Gandy. Actually, Doug beat you to it. Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion or questions?
Are we going to buy two new dump trucks now?
No, we've, those have been, those things have been replaced.
These are out of service already?
These are due to be sold off.
Okay, great. Do you want a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, great. That was passed unanimously.
Yeah, oh, by the way, the meeting concluded at 6:38 PM, so we got it all done in eight minutes.
That's impressive. Yes. And then the State Preserves Board meeting agenda. Michael?
Yeah, if you could click that, Jason, thank you. So John Pearson from the DNR sent this to me and asked me to share it with the council just to let you know, a week from tonight, a week from today, the Preserve Board is meeting, and you see at the top of the agenda, item number three, after they approved their past meeting minutes, is our Lambs and Woods Management Plan for Lambs and Woods State Preserve. So hopefully, two weeks from now, I'll be coming back and announcing they've adopted it. And then the Arbor Committee will meet and begin an action plan for implementing the management plan. So knock on wood, we'll get that passed next week.
Okay, thank you. Administrator and department reports?
I don't have anything in particular today, but I am going to let you know that